The hearing by the Committee on Municipal Affairs, Tourism, Housing and Historic Preservation is now called to order. It is exactly nine o'clock for the record and in accordance to 5 GCA Chapter 8, Subsection 8107. Notices of this public hearing were sent out via email to all my colleagues and to all media, main media broadcasting outlets on September 26, 2016, which adheres to the five-day notice. And the second notice was sent out on Thursday, September 29, 2016, which adheres to the 48-hour notice. Please note that written testimonies may be submitted to our office in reference to the two appointments and to Bill 371 by sending it to the Office of Senator Tina Munya Barnes, 155 Hessler Place, Sagatna, Guam. Or you can do it the old-fashioned way via facsimile at 472-3400 or email at senator@tina munya barnes dot com. Furthermore, if any one of you have any questions, you can contact our office manager, Jean or Chief of Staff Millie Agfaji at 472-3455 or 56. Joining me here, ladies and gentlemen, this morning, I'd like to introduce my colleague, Senator Nerissa Underwood. Thank you for joining me. And to my right is Senator Mary Torres. Good morning. Thank you again for joining us this morning. Ladies and gentlemen, on the agenda this morning, we have the appointments of two individuals. First, the appointment of David T. Lottz, Planning Representative for the Guam Historic Preservation Review Board, and the appointment of Jolie Liston, Ph.D., Archaeologist, Guam Historic Preservation Review Board. Also, ladies and gentlemen, on the appointment this morning will be, I mean, on the agenda this morning will be Bill Number 371-33COR, an Act to amend Section 1515i of Article 5, Chapter 1 of Title 5, Guam Code Annotated. And this is relative to the Guam and Chamorro Educational Facility. And that was introduced by my colleague Senator Dennis Rodriguez, who assures me he'll be here before the bill comes up. So on the two appointments, I'm going to ask, I do know that there's a Mr. Jim Richardson from the National Park Service. Sir, you're more than welcome to come up and share your oral testimony.
Good morning, Senators and members of the public. I'm Jim Richardson, the Superintendent for the National Park Service of War in the Pacific National Historic Park. And I'm here to speak on behalf of Mr. David Lottz for a member of the board. I have known Dave now for about a year and a half and have not only known him to be a very good worker on behalf of the nation through the National Park Service, but also the people of Guam and the history of Guam. Dave has a very long history on Guam in particular, but in the Marianas in general, and is very knowledgeable. Really, I call him our historian, although that's not his professional training. He is our Cultural Resources Manager. So Dave, to me, has reflected very much the professionalism that this position on the board is required. And I know from reviewing other business with the National Park Service when he was in government of Guam and actually also in the employ of the U.S. Air Force, that he is, for many years, involved in exactly the background that is important for this board. And I heartily recommend him. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If there's any else, anybody else wanting to speak on behalf of Mr. Lottz, please come to the table. Ms. Uggan or Ms. Jolie Liston, you're more than welcome to come to the table. I'm going to go ahead and hear both the testimonies for the appointments before I call the two candidates up. Please state your name for the record and where you're from.
Good morning, Hafadeis, and Buenos. My name is Linda Uggan from the Department of Parks and Recreation. I'm the Guam State Historic Preservation Officer. On behalf of the Deputy Director, Deputy Director, they are in support, full support of the two nominees. They couldn't be here pressing matters with the Governor's Office. I've known Dave since 1983, when he was Parks Administrator at the Department of Parks and Recreation. I started my career at the, as an archaeological technician, and I've known him to be very straightforward, get the job done. Although he can be officious, I think it was appropriate in his position as Parks Administrator. Before that, I think he, I believe, I know, that he has done a lot of the data entry in the Parks Inventory Form, Guam Historic Properties Form, and that goes back to 1974, I believe. And when I take out a site file, I see his name as Planner 3. I say, oh, I know Mr. Lottz. So he's been around and he knows. He knows what's out there. He knows the parks and what needs to be done, like the back of his hands. I'm in full support of his nomination to the Guam Historic Preservation Review Board and also to the Guam Preservation Trust. He is like a guiding light for me. He's very sensible. He gives guidance where it's, he feels that I need, and we never get into an argument or heated discussion or debate and so forth. He knows what he's doing. So I'm in full support of Mr. David Lottz. And I'll speak also on behalf of Jolie Liston, Director and Deputy Director, are in full support of her nomination. I've known Jolie maybe going on three to four years. Jolie is an outstanding researcher, an outstanding archaeologist, knows Micronesia like the back of her hand. She's done a lot of work in Palau, Yap, all over Micronesia. She's here on Guam, hopefully to settle. And she did the Menengun Concentration Camp nomination and the Seguitin Massacre Site nomination, which are both on the National Register. We're trying to get those nominations on the National Historic Landmark, the first of its kind for Guam. Guam does not have historic landmark, and it's more prestigious than the National Register. Jolie is sincere in her desire to help the program. She sees the right and wants to, she sees the wrong and wants to right it, and I appreciate that. I'm just hoping that she will continue her service as an archaeologist and a Cultural Resources Manager here on Guam, if things pan out for her. So I'm in full support of her membership to the Guam Historic Preservation Review Board and the Guam Preservation Trust. Thank you, Mrs. Massey.
Hago mas buenas tardes. So any questions for Ms. Uggan? No? Si, Jesus, masi. With that being said, I'm going to go ahead and do something a little bit different. I'm going to go ahead to call the two nominees up to share their presentation, and then we'll open up for questions, please. For the record, just state your name, your full name. Before Mr. Lottz starts, I will note for the record that Mr. Joe Canatich, Program Officer for the Guam Preservation Trust, has submitted testimony for both appointees in support of. So I'd like to just note that for the record. Si, Jesus, masi.
Well, thank you. My name is David Terry Lottz, and I've been nominated for my second term on the Guam Historic Preservation Review Board. So I did submit written testimony with a little background. I don't necessarily want to read that unless you so desire. Well, basically, I'm very grateful for the words of support from the two individuals who just immediately preceded me, and I don't think I can add too much to that, although in summary, I've been on Guam since 1970. It's home. Started with the Department of Parks and Recreation with reasonable, good input in historic preservation program, and then retired, was at the Anderson Air Force Base, managing cultural and natural resources, and current in position. Similar role with Cultural Resources at the War in the Pacific National Historical Park. I've also been an advocate, independent of those positions from time to time on several issues. Probably my biggest notoriety is, along with my wife Beverly, who's in the audience, we've authored the best track song on Guam, the only island hiking guidebook. So that's basically it in a nutshell.
Si, Jesus, masi, Mr. Lottz.
Thank you, thank you.
Ms. Jolie?
My name is Jolie Liston. And I've only been here, well, I was here on Guam in the '90s to work in Taragi and Arodi. I was here for two years then, and I've been back here on Guam for four years now. Most of my time has been in other parts of Micronesia. I've been a Cultural Resource Manager for archaeologists for 28 years, and I feel my knowledge of the rules and regulations from both the federal standpoint and the local Micronesia standpoint will benefit the community.
Thank you very much, Ms. Jolie. Any questions? Before I open the question up for my colleagues to ask, I'd like to welcome Senator Jimmy Aspaldon for also joining us this morning. Senator Underwood, any comments or questions, please?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay. While we arrange our seating here, I just, I just want to thank both of you for accepting the nomination. And I just have one question, which I ask standard of those who are nominated to the boards. What do you think are the critical policy issues that are facing the Guam Preservation Review Board at this point?
Critical issues, I think continuing public education, ensuring our cultural resources are adequately preserved, which is identifying, again, with the education program, but also ensuring that we work with the private sector and the land use agencies on the island, because as we progress and develop, it's essential that we preserve these cultural resources.
So when you're talking about the public education, you're talking not for this to be integrated in the Guam Department of Education and private schools, or is this something that is the public education that would be sponsored separately as a community service?
I'm looking at it as an all-encompassing component, certainly in the school system, but also in the general community, to increase just public awareness of these resources. From time to time, we have controversies that come up, and it's important that people understand that there are cultural resources that can be impacted.
Right, okay. Thank you, Ms. Jolie.
I agree with what Dave said, that education is extremely important. Education not only for the youth and for the community, but also education for the college students and those that are looking for careers. There's a strong need for more Chamoros to be within the Cultural Resource Management Program, and they need to be trained with the rules, regulations, and what, how they can benefit the community. So it needs to be within the college system also. There also needs to be help with the historic properties inventory system, and I think that can be done once the historic properties inventory system is properly set up in place. That's going to be available to the community for them to have a better understanding of the resources that are out here. Also, education in the sense that archaeology is a holistic study that involves the heritage for, and a legacy of the past, that it's not just pretty artifacts. It goes into the environment and what the environment was in the past and how it can help us prepare for the future. In other words, making Cultural Resource Management relevant to today's issues.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Underwood. Also, ladies and gentlemen, joining us this morning, good Senator Rodriguez, Senator Massey for joining us. Senator Torres, any comments or questions?
Mr. Lottz and Ms. Liston, Hafade, and thank you for being here. Mr. Lottz, congratulations, you were the recipient of the 2012 Ancient Order of the Chamorai, I understand.
Yes, I am. Thank you.
That is quite remarkable. That makes you blood, almost.
Thank you.
With the rest of our kin. But, you know, I wanted to comment about the need for a successor to the likes of you two incredible people and your contributions to cultural preservation and cultural awareness. But I want to also ask you, what are your thoughts as we look at development on Guam and the unearthing of certain areas and the manipulation of the topography? What some of your thoughts are with that and whether there's a need to contain that to some degree? And I speak, I'm referencing, for example, the view properties that are on hillsides where the natural mountain line or mountain range is tampered with to afford housing projects. What are some of your thoughts on those sorts of practices and whether that infringes or imposes a little bit on the cultural aspect or the cultural significance of our island? Any thoughts on that?
Certainly some thoughts on it. In general, a lot of times, development depends on where it is and how you do it. Now, relatively to your good question on putting development, say, on hillside, that looks into a concept of cultural landscapes or view sheds. And I think there is concern on many aspects like that, and I can at least relate to one that relates to my current position, because at War in the Pacific Park, we have an outstanding viewscape from the Assen Bay overlook down to the historic beaches in Assen, and any type of, say, high-rise developments along the, in the private property, say, in the village, would impinge upon that. Now, again, I think development should be channeled in the appropriate locations on the island, and in many places, it should not be encouraged. And I think that's a challenge that leadership needs to take on, because we need quality development, but we also need quality preservation of our culture and cultural resources.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
One aspect of going into, anytime you're dealing with land on an island, it can get to be a sticky situation. But one way to address the issue is by establishing a priority of cultural landscapes on Guam and to, in that priority, let's decide that which areas should be preserved for future generations, and then go about some method of trying to acquire those lands, because if they're in private property, there's nothing can be done about it. However, the cultural landscape concept and preservation can be used on military lands and on government lands. So there's methods to do it, but it would have to be a very brought-to-the-community-and-discussed process.
And one more thought. What is your, what is your thought on trying to reach out and have some of those artifacts that were removed from the island brought back to the island? And I'm talking specifically about many of the artifacts that may have been taken by naval officers as souvenirs and removed from the island. Because we, you know, we unearth things from time to time, sometimes by accident, but we also know that there are some significant pieces that were well cared for by others who were once residents of the island. Any thoughts on reaching out in terms of preservation, just looking beyond our borders to try and bring some things back home?
I think it's pretty simple. It just should be done.
I think that with a well-thought-out presentation to the people who now possess these, that they would be willing to give them back to the community they belong to. But I also think there needs to be a method of curation here, once they get here. In some instances, they may be curated better where they are. So we need to make sure we have a system in place for curation.
Thank you very much. Before I call my next colleague, I'd like to just acknowledge the presence of the Director from the Department of Chomoral Affairs, Mr. Johnny Sablon. Thank you so very much. And from Gita, I see Mr. Jay Rojas, si, Jesus, masi, for being here this morning. Thank you. Senator Aspaldon, comments or questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning.
Good morning.
Actually, I don't really have any questions, because I'm, Mr. Lottz, I think everybody knows you and your involvement with, you know, just with our culture and our, and the landscape, and you've done a lot of good work. Ms. Liston, welcome. And I was looking at your background, and you definitely have the background to be able to move us forward in terms of our cultural preservation and a lot of the things that we, we do and a lot of the concerns that we have, especially as we look forward to the realignment and possibly other private developments that come forward. I know that you've taken a look at the laws of Guam when it comes to this. I know that there is one. I mean, this is relative to Senator Torres's questions, but it just came to mind that there is a law in the books that requires that any relics and artifacts that are found, even on private property, actually belong to the people of Guam, and, you know, it should be reported. And I look forward to your involvement in this and keeping track, because, again, once I think momentum starts to build going forward in the military realignment and, again, possibly other investment, investments into our island, we'll probably see a lot of the artifacts unearthed. And I think it's very important that you keep a keen eye on all this development so that we could preserve and bring back to the government what is for, really, the future generations to come, just to, but I just wanted to thank you for putting yourselves forward and using whatever expertise, all the expertise that you have to help us. And that's my only comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Senator Rodriguez, any comments, sir?
Thank you very much, Madam Chairman. No questions, just want to thank you for your service in taking up this call. I know, Mr. Lottz, this, you're already on the board, and just want to thank you for your service and thank you for your commitment for moving forward. I don't really know you personally. I know your wife very well. I want to take this opportunity to thank her for her service to our island through the Guam Memorial Hospital Volunteers Association, and so I want to thank her very much for that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Si, Jesus, masi, Senator Rodriguez. I, too, want to take the time to thank the both of you for you continuing to step up to the plate, for you for coming on board and accepting the position of the Governor Kunti Nefek, two finer folks to help out, I think, with the passion and the love that you have for our island. One day, we'll go through that boonie stomp thing, because I see it all the time, you know, the level of degree of how hard the boonie stomping will be, but I always think, God, he's got another one out. But literally, your passion for our island and making sure that preservation is out there, and for you, Ms. Jolie, you've been able to, I like to say, the gatekeeper, one who helped Guam put us on the National Register of Places, and both your passions for trying to get us on for the National Landmark. I think, at least for me, having worked with the Menengun Memorial Foundation for at least the last decade and a half, and hearing the good news, what, not even six months ago, that we're finally getting recognized for the history, but more importantly, for the beauty that's there, and having to make sure that the story continues to be told about who we are as island people, about our place, about our community, but more importantly, the land that the story needs to continue to be told, and how our, how our folks suffered, died, and even the atrocities that happened. Sometimes it may not be so pretty, but we have to tell the story so that our children and our grandchildren understand what our parents went through. And for me, my mom's still alive, and you two just have a passion that every time I see, just continues to love Guam very much. And I want to say for the record and to the listening audience that you both have my support. I will try my very best to make it on the October session to, so that we, so we can vote on it. We hope to get unanimous support for both of you, and I just want to say thank you for never giving up on our island, so thank you very much. I don't see, if there's anybody else out there before I call these two appointments publicly heard, if there's anyone else who would like to speak? I see Dr. Marsh, you're more than welcome, Dr. Titel, to come to the table. Please just sit there. I'll just have her join the table. She wants to make sure that she gives some oral testimony. Dr. Titel, you're more than welcome. Dr. Kelly Marsh Titel, please.
Yes.
And Mr., yes, thank you, Ms. Jolie. Just give her the mic. Is it on? Okay.
Hafade, as you mentioned, my name is Dr. Kelly Marsh Titel. I'm an adjunct professor of both history, specifically the history of Guam, and Chamorro Studies classes at the University of Guam. And I also carry out community projects for Aduda Foundation, mainly focusing on ethno-historical projects. So I put together a written testimony, which I'll read from here and then submit it afterwards. So I wrote this letter in full support of Dr. Jolie Liston, and in arriving here, also seeing Dave Lottz, I would like to add him to my testimony as well. Four positions at the Guam Historic Preservation Review Board, representing disciplines of history and archaeology and other seats that they may occupy. I have known Dr. Liston for seven years, and I can say with confidence that in her work, she goes above and beyond the call of duty to ensure that the outcome of the work at hand is of the highest quality. And certainly, for David Lottz, the same applies. I have known him for much longer. We've known each other for decades, and I know his heart and his commitment to the community of Guam and the cultural resources of the island. They're of the highest importance to him and to Dr. Jolie Liston, who's been a part of our community prior to this and has done outstanding work, that other people have come up to me and have mentioned that it's some of the highest work that they've seen for Guam in the field of archaeology. So for both of them, they both care about, as I mentioned, local and indigenous communities, and they both, I know through experience and observation, make certain that appropriate community members and leaders are consulted and community issues are adequately considered. They both have applied generous amounts of support to the community, to community projects, and provide assistance to outreach projects to the best of their ability. For these reasons and more, they both would be valuable assets to the cultural and historical preservation community of Guam by being members of the Guam Historic Preservation Review Board. preservation community of Guam by being members of the Guam Historic Preservation Review Board. I've actually been a member of that board for many years myself, and I know what it demands, and I know that they will go, like I said, above and beyond the call of duty to fulfill those obligations. So with that, I provide my support of their unwavering commitment and energy towards the appointment. I know they will apply that in the same way that Mr. Lottz has done for the Historic Preservation Review Board in the past and will remain community-minded in all of their efforts. Thank you very much for letting me provide testimony.
Sisus Maasi. Dr. Titunel, thank you very much for presenting your oral testimony, and we would love to have a copy so we can append it to the journal. Thank you to the committee report. Sina Maasi.
Sisus Maasi.
And also, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention Mrs. Lottz. Thank you so very much for being here. And Senator Rodriguez, Senator, I thank you for all the years of volunteerism. I know you work closely with my mom at the GMH Volunteers, and I think you're one of the oldest nonprofit organizations, the organizations on the island of Guam, so I just want to say thank you for all your hard work. And I guess, you know, when we have folks like you in the community step up to the plate and give from the heart, I think it's such a blessing, so thank you again. I commit to having both your appointments on the session agenda, and I think we have session on December 13th, the week of the 13th, if I'm not mistaken. It's either the 13th or the 17th, one of those days, but it will be soon. So sina maasi. If there's no other questions or comments, God bless you.
Thank you.
Have a good day. Have a good day, sina maasi. As they depart from the presentation table, next up, ladies and gentlemen, is Bill Number As introduced by my good colleague, Senator Dennis Rodriguez, it's an act to amend Section 1515i of Article 5, Chapter 1 of Title V, Guam Code annotated relative to the Guam and Tomorrow Educational Facility. I do know that there's some folks here to speak, and before I ask Senator Rodriguez to speak about the bill, I do have Mr. Jay Rojas from GITA to speak, Mr. Johnny Sablon, and Mr. Clifford Guzman. Will you present oral testimony also? Okay. So you're more than welcome to come and sit at the table, and I'll go ahead and have the good -- okay. Yes, I understand that Mr. Clifford Guzman has a press conference, and he has to get out of here, so you're more than welcome to start before the presentation. Senator Rodriguez, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, Bill 371 is very simple, really. It's to lift the cap, the $27 million cap, on the bond proceeds for the Guam Museum. They are and will hear today from GITA that there are some savings that GITA has achieved in the other projects, and so what they like to do is be able to use those proceeds and use them for the shortfalls that they're experiencing over the Guam Museum. This does not require any new borrowing or any new financing. It's just being able to be flexible and have them work within what they already have, and so we'll hear more from them later on this morning. Thank you.
Sina Maasi. Senator Rodriguez, with that, Mr. Clifford Guzman, can I state your name for the record, where you're from, and if you support or oppose the bill?
Thank you very much, and, Don, Sisus Maasi. My name is Clifford Guzman, President of Galidee Group. We have been contracted by the DCA to manage, operate, and maintain the Guam Educational Facility, the Guam Museum. And so I'm here in support of this bill. Although the majority of the items in the listings are not necessarily directly related to operations, they are most certainly directly related to revenue production and producing revenues to help sustain the museum on a roll-forward basis, so they are very, very important. The first three items, I don't know if you have a copy of the GCEF funding requirements. There are three. One is to implement redesign, to install the curatorial spaces. That is important. We are setting up a curatorial lab there, and, as you know, there are over 250,000 items that are in the current, that are warehoused by the Guam Museum over at the DNA Building, and a lot of those do need to be conserved, preserved. There's a lot of work that needs to be done as we start bringing that over. And so this is very important. The other two items are to convert the fire suppression systems to dry chemical, and that's specifically for the security systems. And so what we need to do right now, they have a wet sprinkler in the security system computer room, and we need to convert that over to a dry sprinkler to make sure that if anything does happen, we don't lose $280,000 system. But, you know, beyond that, everything that's on this list is important to the museum. It is important in making it, making sure that everything we've got, and we have every opportunity to make as many, as much revenue as we can. In our testimony on the prior bill to provide some funding for the operations this last quarter, we made it very clear that, you know, every day is a loss in revenues, and our goal is to try to get us as self-sustaining as possible in 2018. We're well on the way to that, and I'm happy to say. As a matter of fact, part of the reason why I do need to leave for the press conferences, we are having one with the Guam International Film Festival, which we're very proud to be able to host next month. And again, that's a revenue generator for the museum. So, you know, I give my full support to this. I've had the pleasure and the opportunity to work and be involved in meetings and conferences with GITA, its designers, DCA, and we're all in this together. We're all trying to accomplish the same thing. There is, there have been some bumps and grinds along the way. There's no secret to that. The good news is we have solutions, and that's what's important. We can wring our hands about all the bumps and grinds, but if you don't have solutions, then you still have bumps and grinds. So again, I want to give my full support to this. As the operator, we're very concerned that every particular item that's on this list is covered. You know, we have the responsibility to market this museum. The huge piece of that is going to be with the tour groups, of course, and we've been in negotiations with them, and they've made no bones about it, that we absolutely need to have a fully operational facility. And we realize that's not going to come till March. But again, we don't want to have, you know, a permanent exhibit that isn't complete. We don't want to have a building that has still got some questionable issues on it. And I think between the construction manager, the architect, the contractor, GITA and DCA and its designers for the permanent exhibit, I think we have a good roll-forward plan on it, and so we really appreciate your support for this bill. It doesn't cost anymore. It's just a matter of reworking some funding that's in there. And, you know, to that end, again, Don, Sisus Maasi, and good evening. But it's all in progress. Thank you very much.
Winpo betsuwa. Mr. Guzman, thank you very much. And if my colleagues don't have any questions for Mr. Guzman, I'll go ahead and dismiss him, because I know he has that very important press conference. Sisus Maasi.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Rojas and Mr. Sablon. I'd also just like to note for the record, I know that Mr. Simeon Palomo is here with us, and the namesake of the museum, late Senator Tony Palomo, thank you for being here this morning in support of this bill.
Wafanina.
Okay. Kusiki putuva.
Salam li na olipra hamzu to dos, and Madam Chair, and committee members. My name is Johnny Sablon. I'm the new president, appointed president of the Department of Calhoun Green Island Tomorrow, and I'm here, actually, to support Bill 371-33, and I ask for the committee members for your full support to approve this additional funding so that we may complete our beautiful Guam Museum Tomorrow Educational Facility as a world-class museum. Enoa papi songri, sisus maasi.
Hagumos po betsuwa, Mr. Sablon. Mr. Jay Rojas?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hafadeh, members of the Committee on Municipal Affairs, Tourism, Housing, and Historic Preservation. My name is Jay Rojas, and I am the administrator for the Guam Economic Development Authority, and I am submitting written testimony and both oral testimony as well in support of Bill 371-33. As you recall, Public Law 30-228, as amended, appropriated $27 million for the construction of the Guam and Tomorrow Education Facility and $41 million for the 22 other projects of the so-called Hot Bond Program. We are pleased to report that 19 out of the 22 projects have been completed, most notably the Guam Farmers Co-op Facility in Derido, Flea Market, the Plaza de España, the Melas Bell Tower, and the Magellan Monument, the Mangila Public Market, and the Inner Ahan Community Center and various other park projects throughout the island. As projects remain to be completed, the most significant, one being the Guam and Tomorrow Educational Facility, which will permanently display the Guam and Tomorrow history, artifacts, and culture. To finish this legacy project, some additional funding is needed. Bill 371-33 is intended to lift the $27 million ceiling that was established under Public Law 30-228 for the Senator Antonio "Tony" Palomo Guam and Tomorrow Educational Facility, while respecting the relative priority of the projects established by the legislature under the law. No new funding is being requested. We simply would like to use the savings from other projects to complete the highest priority project so that residents and visitors can begin to learn and enjoy what the Guam Museum has to offer. Also in attendance with us today is Mr. Barry Howard from Barry Howard Limited, who is a design consultant for our permanent exhibit, and he is actually offering to be able to give you a presentation as to what that permanent exhibit is going to be, is what that permanent exhibit will be. So my testimony today also addresses the two underlying aspects of the bill: the need for additional funding to complete the Guam Museum and the savings generated to complete by the projects. I am finally able to report that the occupancy permit for the facility has been issued by the Department of Public Works, and there are few remaining items that need to be complete within the construction contract to accommodate the changes to the building as proposed by the Department of Tomorrow Affairs, and we will tackle these once Bill 371-33 is enacted. Regarding the need for additional funding, as you all know, there have been delays in completing the construction of the building, which was originally scheduled for December of 2014. Although liquidated damages have been assessed, they are insufficient to cover the additional costs. These delays have resulted in cost increases and all other museum-related activities, including the supervision over and fabrication of the exhibits, as well as to purchase the installation of audiovisual equipment, construction management, media production, as well as the construction itself. While I can provide details of these increases, we are currently projecting that approximately $800,000 is needed to complete the construction, fabrication of exhibits, and the media production. We also project about $800,000 in savings from projects that are nearing completion or have been completed, which we request to complete the museum. None of this funding is from the San Vitor's Tumon Flood Mitigation Project. These savings were generated through the bidding process and our efforts to keep the change orders at a minimum. We are also able to secure assistance from other agencies to keep in an effort to maximize available resources. My staff and I, as well as the various contractors who are working on the museum, are available to answer any of your questions in the effort to secure your support for the legislative passage of Bill 371-33. Sisus Maasi to you and to the members of your committee and to the 33rd Guam Legislature and the opportunity to provide testimony.
Senator Rodriguez, any questions?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you very much for your testimony. Jay, the $800,000, that's what's needed to complete the museum and get it open, right?
Correct.
Okay, so the bill right now really leaves it open-ended, that it's, we're opening up the cap and giving the flexibility for you to be able to use whatever is needed. And one of the concerns I had even before introducing this was to ensure that the funding that's set aside for the Tumon is still set aside until we come up with a final Phase Three, a plan for Phase Three. So I want to ask that if we now put here that we be specific in the bill and keep it at $800,000, is that going to work out?
Thank you, Senator. It will definitely alleviate some of the issues that we do currently have, yes. If we actually cap it to that $800,000, in the event that we come to three months from now when we're looking at the real expenditures for the museum, we may have to come back to you again. A little leeway would essentially be appreciated in that aspect. Whether you might want to limit the text of the language of the bill to be able to have the money allocated, reallocated by savings, that may give us some opportunity. But right now, we have the flexibility to move that savings towards other project, but with this $27 million ceiling, we're capped at that limit for the museum itself.
Okay. Do you have, can you provide the committee the amount of the exact savings from other projects? I know you do it through the monthly reports, but if you give one to the committee that has just, as of today, I guess, what is the total savings from other projects, so that then if it's over $800,000, then we can probably give that as a cushion for you for the museum?
Absolutely. I do know that our current savings today are just under a million, just under, just under $1 million at about $980,000, but we can definitely get that information to you.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Rodriguez. I just want to make sure that you know, because the listing, the GCEF funding requirements that are needed for the building, for the facility right now, you're noting $800,000, but I see $899,000. I want to make sure that at least we put it in the record that whatever the requirement is for. And also, I just want to do a verification, Mr. Rojas, on, I see that the, there's an amount here for media production exclusions, and I know Mr. Clifford had to leave, and if I wasn't mistaken, in previous legislation, we had already accounted for some, for the theater, for equipment, and some other stuff. I see $300,000, and then labor material increases under media production. Maybe just a further delineation on that for the record? Maybe not today, but if you can at least provide something in detail for that portion?
Actually, that's all going to be included in the presentation by Mr. Barry Howard.
Oh, okay.
So when we're talking about the media production exclusions, as well as the labor that's required for it, this is the media as part of the permanent exhibit itself.
Okay.
So what we're looking at with the permanent exhibit is it's going to be a very interactive display, and you will get a tour of that, you know, in just a few, once he testifies. So unfortunately, as it was initially presented for us to be able to look at this permanent exhibit, there had to be some cuts because of that $27 million cap.
Mm-huh.
So this will actually help us to be able to free it up, so that permanent exhibit will have everything included as proposed.
Okay. Well, if there's no other questions or comments from my colleagues, I'd like to see that presentation.
May I, Madam Chair?
I think both of you have a question, right? Okay. Let me go ahead and start with Senator Underwood. Did you have a question? I do apologize. I'll see her first.
Just as a matter of clarification, I believe that it was mentioned earlier that we do have an occupancy permit now, which is great, but our opening is not anticipated until March?
We do have an occupancy permit, but that occupancy permit essentially just transfers, quote-unquote, accessibility to the facility from one contractor to another. So we have an occupancy permit on the building itself, but what we would like to do is be able to get our museum fabricators and permanent exhibit operators into the building, which is going to require some additional construction, so that's the reason why we're looking at limiting the attendance. But the March deadline is actually there to be set for the permanent exhibit to actually open as well.
Okay, so that would be when we can tell the people, when we can then have the full use and experience of our museum?
That would be correct with one caveat, and that caveat would be the passage of Bill 371-33.
Okay, of course. And with the list that was actually provided here, this is, as all of you have already worked through, are the critical elements that would help us get to that target.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Senator Mary, please.
Mr. Ros, I just had a question with, I understand the need to get these gaps -- gaps completed so that the museum can be at a point where it can open up. But are there also, have GITA also contemplated additional revenues that might come in from damages from construction delays and the like? Is that also factored into the, the operating expenses going forward?
It's not factored into the operating expenses themselves. In fact, what we've done is the liquidated damages, or damages that we've collected from the contractor being delayed, have actually been recycled and reused towards the, to finish the construction of the museum to get us to this point.
They've already been absorbed, it's not something we can...
Pretty much.
Okay. All right, I have no further questions, thank you.
Sutusmasi, Senator Espaldón.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Ross, just a quick question also. In your testimony, you said there's 19 out of 22 projects that have been completed, which was the purpose for the hot bond. And can you list what the three are that are not? I would imagine that the museum is one of them.
The museum is definitely one of them. The next one would actually be the San Vitor's Tumon Flooding.
Okay.
Okay? And then the last one would be E-PAL Park Renovations, where we do have an invitation forbid in the process.
So out of that hot bond, out of that 60, what is it, $68.5 million, what is reserved for the Tumon Bay mitigation, flooding mitigation?
Total for the Tumon Bay flooding mitigation is $11.5 million.
Okay, and then the E-PAL renovation, or whatever you...
$370,000.
370. Okay, good enough. And then you're saying that those, those funds for those two specific purposes will not be touched?
Not necessarily for the E-PAL Park. There is a cap that, there is a cap that we've held, I'm sorry, not a cap, but the 11 and a half million for Tumon Flooding has been reserved for that, but because we're still under bid for the 370,000 for E-PAL Park, that still needs to be flexible. Now, the way the, the current law is actually written is we do have the flexibility to move the savings that we currently have into other projects aside from the museum itself. So we do have that, that flexibility to do that in the event that we do need more.
Is that another way of saying that that is one of those, the E-PAL project is, perhaps can be put aside in favor of something perhaps of more priority? Is that what you're saying?
No, unless the project is already listed in the original bill. So we can't, I mean, we definitely could, but that wouldn't actually complete the project itself. So we are anticipating that it would be about 370,000. But that does not necessarily mean that we would move that money from E-PAL Park to the museum.
Can I just ask what exactly we're talking about in terms of E-PAL? What kind of project are we talking about?
I believe it's, it's to be able to approve the lighting and the safety precautions at E-PAL Beach.
I'm sorry, lighting?
Lighting.
Okay. And safety precautions at 370. Okay, and I, only because the way the bill is written, like, as you mentioned, right, basically lifts the cap on all these projects and, you know, basically allows GITA to use whatever funds are within that $68.5 million, taking away the 11.5 for the flood mitigation in Tumon, and then use it however you wish. And again, I was just wondering whether E-PAL Beach is going to be sacrificed for, towards...
No, it would allow us to be able to use, use the funds however we wish on the projects that would be listed.
Okay.
But E-PAL Beach Park is still on the agenda to, to be able to be completed.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
And the timeline for that project, Jay, for the E-PAL Beach, you have the RFP out, is what you said, right?
We have an IFB to be reissued.
Say that again?
So once, to be reissued.
Okay.
So we will actually be going out with the IFB, the additional IFB, I'm sorry, the reissuing of the IFB within the next 30 days, but then we have to look at the process to be able to figure out exactly what the time date would be.
Okay, an IFB over an RFP?
An IFB.
Yeah, Invitation Forbid.
Correct.
Yeah.
An RFP.
Okay.
As it's a construction project, it would be the lowest bidder.
Okay. Sutusmasi, so with that, I think we'll go ahead. You're more than welcome to stay up or give room for the presentation to be noted, please.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Good morning, Halfaday. And if I may, just introduce your names for the record, and then you can proceed with the presentation. Sutusmasi.
Thank you. My name is Barry Howard, and this is my colleague Lynn Henley, who is equally invested with me in our now almost 10-year commitment to bring this museum into being. And I promise you, it is as much a part of our lives as it is of yours. So yeah, I would very much like to kind of walk you through what the visitor may experience, will experience when we complete the work. The way I'm going to do this is kind of like an abridged version of a very complex explanation, and I know you don't have all day, and I tend to talk a great deal, so I'm going to try to be terse rather than wordy.
Do we need the lights off, Mr. Howard? Do we, do you need the lights off?
Pardon me?
The lights. Should we turn down a bit?
If it would be easier, yeah, you might, it might make the image a lot easier to see. So basically, what I'm going to do is to walk you through our set of design drawings, and I'll be going faster in some places where the details of construction are really not so significant in terms of what the visitor will experience. Also, imagine yourself to be a first-time visitor to the museum. The way it's designed and configured, if people come back many times, certainly from the community, and have already seen the sort of orientation experience, they may want to bypass it. So we've made accommodations for that. But, so I'm, I'm going to start basically with a floor plan of the second level of the building. And imagine that visitors, oh yeah, imagine that visitors will have entered the building on the first level from the south-facing entrance. They'll come into the lower lobby, they'll acquire their tickets, and they will come upstairs directly, either through a stairwell or the elevator, the elevator and the stairway wrapped around it. And they'll arrive on the second level in a vestibule, glazed vestibule. And in front of them, in front of them is a beautiful mural that was done by Dawn Reyes of Fauna Creating the World. It's a beautiful piece of artwork. I should say in preference, as a preface, that the museum is for, about, and as largely as possible, by the Chumaro people. So this is, it's everything wrapped together. Everywhere you'll find artists who have contributed to the design of the museum themselves. So visitors will be in this enclosure, they'll be listening to some beautiful music, and they'll wait their turn until the docent tells them it's time to enter through these doors into a queuing area. So now we have 35 people awaiting their opportunity to begin their adventure. The queuing area is not only a place to do a pre-show, in our language, you have a pre-show or show, and then the rest of the experience, but it's also an art lobby. We will have constantly changing works of art by contemporary artists on the island, but just as it were, an art gallery. There are two, there are two suspended video screens, as you can see in the drawing up here, and they will be moving slowly with beauty shots of the island. And about two minutes or so before the doors to the Orientation Theater are automatically opened, those screens will come on with a pre-show. And the pre-show, aside from welcoming the visitors, is also an opportunity to explain the mural that they were looking at when they first came into the vestibule. So it will be the story of Punta Fauna, and Fauna is, in this case, we're going to make this an animated presentation, so that it's exciting and interesting, et cetera. So for a minute or two, the creation story of the Chumaro people is brought into focus for everybody. And just before the doors open, the last line of the narrator of this pre-show will say, you've seen, you've heard this tale of Punta Fauna, and we're now going to tell you another tale, and it's Igeranota. And the doors open, and the visitors are ushered into a wonderful circular theater for 35 people. The screen for this theater wraps around half of the interior, so that the image is so large that they're drawn into it. We also have a very cutting-edge sound system called the Atmos System, which is a surround sound speaker, so when things are happening, et cetera. Basically, the script for our about 12-minute show is about how this island came to be, the geomorphology that preceded its being present in the Pacific Ocean, and the very first people who were part of the human diaspora over millions of years, spreading across the planet, those that came down through Southeast Asia, those who made that first intrepid voyage east and found themselves on the shore of this island. And that program literally ends with the first of the indigenous people on Guam leaving the shore and walking into the forest. And as that last image is frozen on the screen, the lights come up, the doors open, and the visitors leave the theater and actually walk into the very forest that they had seen at the end of the film. The forest, looking at it in plan, is created by a series of prosenia, that is panels, each about six feet apart. There's a walkway through them, and the prosenia, as you can see in section, allows them to look left and right, or east and west, at other things that relate to the story of the natural history of Guam, and how the first people used those natural resources to develop their culture, develop their society, and to begin to populate the island. In between each of those areas is a presentation of the various biomes on the island, the nat, the, the forest, the shoreline, the beach, the wetlands, et cetera. And in each of those areas, there's a four-foot-by-10-foot-high beautiful color photograph that was taken by Victor Konzaga and reproduced in these areas. And in front of it is a vitrine with artifacts, and two drawers with artifacts, and a great deal of text and graphics that explain everything from how these natural resources were used by the ancestors of the Chumaro people, and how the island came into population. Imagine that you're actually walking through that forest, and each of those panels is a photo mural of one or another aspects of the forest on the island. You are listening to birds everywhere, because obviously 4,000 years ago, there were no brown snakes, and there was a great avian population on the island. So we want people to feel that they're experiencing, experiencing it just like the ancestors of the current residents of Guam. There is a lighting system, as you see, strung across the, at about 11 feet in the air, which allows us to actually light the set. So it's a very theatrical experience, sound, images, touch, et cetera. This allows people to become part of the story, the visitors themselves, and it's just elevations of each one of those panels. As I say, I don't want to spend too much time on the details. As they walked, walked south of the building into the forest, if they turned around and looked back, they're looking at the curved wall of the theater now from the outside, and it is an open sea mural. So we're establishing the fact that the land and the sea were the resources which supported the first people on the island and allowed them to grow and mature and build their society. There's a, there's the, the very big billed fish hanging from above, and that's really a three-dimensional marlin, which you're aware of, I'm sure. There are a number of small showcases with primitive hooks that we use to catch pelagic fish. In the right-hand corner here, there's an aquarium, it's a video aquarium, and we don't have to worry about the fish passing away, and, but they do pass by your vision, and that's a continuous experience. Just to the right of that, there is a companion exhibit about reef fish. And here again, we have some coral in a vitrine, we have a number of fish, and we have artifacts that were used by the early Chumaro people to catch the fish. There's a, right here, there's a, an ancient poiu, a device that was used by the early folks to trap and, and bait and snare reef fish. There's a, there's a number of devices everywhere that were recreated. We obviously can't have everything that was original because it's thousands of years ago. But we have artifacts combined with graphics, combined with the sound, and this visual experience. And then hanging from above, that rectilinear orange shape in this drawing represents one of nine acoustic banners that are hung throughout the galleries. It's a double-use device, and the one thing that helps deaden the echoes of people talking, et cetera, to make it a pleasant experience. And it's also an opportunity to show off a number of artistic pieces, again, by artists on the island, that abstractly sometimes and cleverly represents the theme of each of the galleries. So we have been in the Natural History Gallery. As I say here, for example, is how the shore was used to catch shoreline fish, and we have artifacts, and we have graphics and text. That's a close-up of our little aquarium. I'm running through quickly, as I say. And again, each of these areas is very rich with imagery, with original illustrations, and with objects. So I think you can gather it as we move through without going into much more detail, but it is complicated. The last of the prosenia actually is something you could look into but not walk through because we want to divert our traffic path beyond and on into the other galleries. But what it does show you is a continuous image of the freshwater resources on the island. Since we had already shown the open ocean on one side, we decided that we wanted to show this great resource of fresh water, which was a terrific trading item for when, when the first galleons arrived on the island, fresh water was much more important than gold, as was all the fresh fruit that was available. As you saw early on, there is a kind of a cave created with the same sort of photo mural panels as we did for the prosenia, for the forest, and you can step inside and see cave paintings, cave art projected on the interior of the cave. And these are also made up of photographs that were taken by Victor that we're matching together to make a sort of a composite cave. And as I say, you can see that it takes something to make this happen. There's just an idea of how we're compositing the graphic to make the cave look the way it should. Having made the, having come past that area, we come into the transition from the pre-Lati days to the Latif Period. And there's a sort of an evolution that takes place. This close-up of the plan in this area shows a story circle, a half-round circle with three benches in it. This is a docent area where docents can present individual programs to young kids on a regular schedule that will be made available to teachers, et cetera, or any guest, actually. And directly across from that area is a pre-Lati residence, a polithutch structure, which I'll get into in a moment. And as I delineate the view of the very south end of the Latif Period Gallery, there is yet another ocean mural, this time showing the stars, which were used for navigation, and we constantly remind people of that skill which lies at the very core of how the island became populated, obviously. Each of the exhibits that are in that area, I will get to in a moment. For example, Latif Architecture is one of the most significant things with which Chumaro culture is identified, and there is an elevated house that's being, going to be... culture is identified, and there is an elevated house that's going to be built in that corner of the building. There are exhibits, each one talks about canoes, architecture, navigation, et cetera, all part of the Lati period, of the maturation of those skills in that period of time. Looking back again at the story circle, this opportunity to have a live docent relate stories of their own to the young people or to the visitors is really a vital part of a living museum for the programs change. The background of that, of that story circle is a beautiful painting of a Lati area, pre-Lati-to-Lati era village, done by an artist here on the island, and Anita has done just a beautiful job, and it will be mounted to that curve. We'll be able to project moving clouds above it, so it's always alive and always vital, even if there's no program going on at that moment. The theme for the Lati gallery is announced on a video monitor, which has text on it, and scrolling across the bottom are the programs that are on for that day in the story circle. As I go through this, I should say that just as the, just as the docent has control over the programming in the story circle, the docent also has control of a very unique experience which takes place in the pre-Lati structure. You see it in plan here. And here is a video screen out of sight of the viewer. Here is a forty-five-degree piece of glass, clear glass, and by controlling the light source within this space, when people look through here, they first see the pottery baskets and woven pandas mats, panda mats that you would see in a pre-Lati structure. But when the light sources change, all of a sudden, there is a woman sitting on the floor, and she tells you the story. She's a grandmother from five hundred years ago, and she talks about life on the island when she was a young person. This is done by a very fancy trick, which I won't go into, but what I want her to say is that the production in this structure, which I think is so important to the visitor experience, just as the pre-show I described to you about animating the Putinfaluna story are currently not in our media production contract. So these and a few other programs were extrapolated from the original total amount of media production because of some restrictions of the funding at the time. And now, I think, what we're asking is that they be reinstalled, reinserted, so that we can produce these, because without them, it will be an empty experience. Words and music are just important, is what you're looking at, if not more so. And so this is just a quick elevation, so people can look into the poliette structure when there's nothing going on and see it just empty, and if they look at it long enough, the light changes, and bang, there's our little narrator for the next couple of minutes. It's a very exciting thing. We've done it before, and it's killer. So there's some sections through that structures, you know, idea. And as I say, the exhibits in the gallery three, this, the first one, is about archaeology. It's an opportunity to see the Tagaman skull, which with the press of a button becomes forensically decorated to look like a living person. And the visitor gets an idea of how important archaeology is and how important, as you were talking about earlier, of saving and curating the archaeological samples which come out of the ground. I don't think the average person understands the connection between today and thousands of years ago, but for archaeology and having those remnants here. There's just some quick sections about how it works. It's very simple. You light one, you light the other, and it works. We have a very large-scale model of a canoe, which people can look at from above and look around it. This is, I mean, it's not a full-size boat because we'd be out of the building with it, but it's big enough to make sense. And again, an exhibit on voyaging and trade, canoes, navigation, there are artifacts in these exhibits, there are graphics, and it's easy to get through. This is not difficult to do. Again, as I say, we're going to have an elevated house on Latis, and the visitor is able to walk under the ceiling floor of the structure and see a program projected on this wall. It's actually an eighty-screen video monitor, and it's a two-and-a-half to three-and-a-half-minute program about Magellan's arrival. It's done with a series of very, very good illustrations, and it will be kind of an animated, illustrated experience with a very good narrative. So this sort of seminal moment introduces, for the first time, the arrival of new people who had not been on the island, and that seminal moment is carried through into...
(inaudible)
(laugh) Speed it up, yeah, I'm going as fast as I can. I'm dancing as well. So again, as I say, people will come through that little, the Magellan show, make a turn in the area and start walking from south to north, and they will find themselves in what we call the Time of Change. This is a gallery which takes you from Spanish occupation through to the beginning of World War II. This three-D model shows that on one wall, there's a timeline with swipe screens all along the, all along the wall that allows you to be in touch with events from the sixteenth century to, as I say, the twentieth century. The, the area has a series of pieces of furniture we call islands, which are for artifacts and graphics, that whereas the timeline is a chronology of the island from, in that period of time, two-hundred-and-forty-some-odd years, the islands are specific to aspects of Chamorro culture, courage, language...
(inaudible)
...villages, a variety of subjects, which are subject-specific instead of chronological, and they take in that whole period of time. So we call them topical islands instead of tropical islands. And as you see, it fits very nicely into this environment. So there's an elevation of the timeline on the east wall. Looking at the west wall, we have what we call the Spirit Wall, which is introduced by text and basically says that the spirit of the Chamorro people have been, permeate the history we're talking about. Iha Nota takes us from the ancestors, through to today and tomorrow, and we do that very effectively. I'll find that elevation for you in a moment. Racing through here. This is all the furniture that's going to be in that space with drawers and artifacts. So on the west wall is this mirrored wall that actually reflects everything in the gallery and tends to double it in size, but it's fifty percent mirror. And behind the mirror, occasionally, images of the ancestors of the Chamorro people dim up and disappear, dim up and disappear, so that that sense that the spirit of the Chamorro is with us continuously. Now, look at that wall, more details. As you step through the timeline, you step into the Time of Suffering. World War II is portrayed in this plan. On one side is the Japanese occupation. On the lower side is the U.S. return to the island and recapturing the island and bringing it back to the Chamorro people. So these are some sketches of the audio and videos that are happening. This is a very dynamic and animated environment. Everything's seen over a glass rail, evidence of the Japanese presence, evidence of the destruction that happened in order to get the island back in the hands of the Chamorro people and the Americans. All of that, in turn, leads to Gallery Six. We're looking in plan now, having come out of World War II, at a stairwell that leads down again to the first floor. There are a couple of interesting exhibits in here, not the least of which is a series of listening booths, oral testimony from people who were there when the occupation took place for twenty-six months and what they went through, and the stories here are poignant and very deliberately leading in a positive way toward a better future.
Also not in the current budget.
Big pardon?
Not in the current budget.
Oh, it's my colleague tells me that this, the recordings are also not in our current budget, but will be, hopefully, as soon as this is worked out. There's a, there's a continuous reader board here of all the events just after the war leading up to the establishment of the Organic Act in nineteen fifty-one, which is portrayed here by a picture of Truman signing the documents as you walk down the stairs toward the final gallery.
The mural of the walkout is on there, too.
Maybe. Here's a floor plan of the first-floor gallery, which is the last, Gallery Seven, and you've all had the banners, those acoustic banners overhead, leading all the way down. The last one sits right over the lowest stair, and it talks about contemporary times, and it's about the present and the future. This is an area which is all done in black and chrome and very contemporary, and it really has a positive feeling to it, that the future holds a great deal for the Iha Nota still to come. Again, some modeling of various parts of the exhibitions. One of the areas is a map of the Pacific, which has a number of interactive programs about where the Marianas and Guam is for those people who may not recognize where it fits into Oceania. It's an opportunity to talk about the economics of the island, the politics of the island, the changing nature of Guam and the Marianas in a world which is tilting more and more towards Asia, and the importance of the relationship between the islands of Oceania and the nations of the Pacific Rim. These are very important stories we'd like to leave people with. Sort of a close-up of that. There's also an opportunity for people to use a computer, touchscreen computer, to hear what people who live on the island think about issues that people, residents, deal with today. Everything from the military presence to natural, to the natural resources and how they're being handled on the island, environmental protection, and many other issues which involves everybody. So here's a chance to see a person interviewed and hear what they have to say, pro and con about a number of issues. These are island residents. That program also will come into play with this increased availability of funds. It was removed from the original budget. So that's why it's so important that we continue this and finish the work. The last area, the family tree, is, harks back to how important family is in the Chamorro culture, and eventually gives people an opportunity to check genealogy. It's full of photographs, of family photographs. All of those leaves are little tiny monitors, just like you could buy and put in your home where it changes from one picture to another. Well, these are, make a tree out of them, a family tree. And right behind the family tree is another evidence of the spirit of the Chamorro people behind glass mirror, which dim up and dim down. So the spirit remains with us, like so. And finally, just before you leave, we have a series of tall reflective columns, the center of which has a very beautiful painting of a child, and it essentially says, "Iha Nota continues through the eyes of the children yet to come." And this acts as a light baffle so that when people leave and walk out into the corridor when they open the doors, the light doesn't interfere with those people who are looking at the exhibits and not quite ready to leave. But it's, it ends on a beautiful note that the future holds, that Iha Nota will go on so long as there are Chamorro people. And I'm going to shut up. Thank you. Thank you for being patient with me. Because I, I could do this in two hours, too.
Thank you for your presentation. I'm going to go ahead and yield to the author of the legislation if you have any comments or questions.
Thank you very much, sir, for that presentation. Really got me excited, even more excited, for this museum to open up. But you, you mentioned earlier about the media production cost, and maybe someone from GIDEA, Mr. Tovis, can, can come up, too, that the media production cost was not included or was taken off. And so now that with this bill, if it's passed, they'll be able to accommodate that, that cost?
Yes, sir.
And be able to produce it?
Yes, sir.
Is that, so is that why we're, we've pushed it back to March, because there's time that needs to be, you know, they need time to produce this, or just something that's produced?
That's true, too. That's true, too. It wasn't the only reason that we've been delayed, but yes, the fact is, all of this, all of the breakdown for these costs were articulated at the outset. It's just that there wasn't enough funding. We weren't aware of that at the time, that there wasn't enough funding. So we extrapolated from that what we had to in order to get the first part done. We're in post-production on the other material right now, but it's going to be a hassle, no matter what, to get everything done. But we're going to do it. We'll get, we'll get it done.
And it'll be done before March, before the target date?
I'd like to start right now, quite frankly.
Okay. Mr. Tovis, did you want to add to that?
Thank you, and good morning, Senators, Madam Chair. As presented today, this morning, the fact of the matter is, is that we have an opportunity to, in this particular instance, do the full effect of the exhibits at the museum. As mentioned earlier, there was some value engineering done in order to save some money. This was two years ago when we were contemplating on the exhibits and the format of that. And so at this point in time, because we have realized some savings in the other Ha'bon projects, we want to be able to give the wow factor for this museum. So in order to do that, we asked a good senator to help us introduce legislation to make sure that there's enough funding to carry this project full and complete it, so.
Thank you. So just, I don't think it was clear, so if we do this now for maybe October session, if we could, then that's, this production will happen by the time we open in March, or the target date?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Senator Torres. I just wanted to ask the author of the bill, the way that the amendments are done, it, it deletes the specific monetary appropriation for the museum and instead lumps up the entire sixty-eight million, five-hundred thousand dollars for, for the complement of all the projects? Because I, we're just seeing a snapshot of it with this bill. Is that correct?
Okay. I'll go ahead and yield over Senator as Oversight Chair to see if you would like to answer that.
Sure. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. So yes, what this does now, because as we heard earlier, the testimony that there is about three projects that are still pending, but the full sixty-eight point five million is being accounted for now, and because the museum had a specific amount of twenty-seven, twenty-seven million, that was the cost to build that, we are now lifting that in order of priority, having the museum as the top priority project from the remaining projects that were listed in the existing law. So I guess what you have to do is really take a look at the whole, the whole law. We just took a piece of it to be able to make this revision.
If I may, Senator, you have...
I'm sorry, Senator Torres? Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Howard, thank you for the presentation. It was very exciting, and though there was a lot of attention to D- It was very exciting, and though there was a lot of attention to detail, I'm sure between the two of you and probably a lot more, you ate, slept, and drank this thing, and I'm glad you kept it terse. Just a question from your knowledge, I guess what caught my attention of a little bit of concern is that as soon as you walk into the theater, we're talking about, I guess there's a holding room of some sort or a queue...
A queuing area.
A queuing area, right? And then that queuing area, those people, 35 at a time, will enter the theater.
Yes, sir.
Right? I guess the question is, in a day, how many people can actually pass through here?
Oh, well, the original traffic flow, the original traffic flow that was projected by the economic forecaster back in 2006, I think, if I remember correctly, it was something around 1,000 per day. And if you take 35 people, and we can do five shows an hour, that is five 12-minute programs, including load-unload, it only takes a minute and a half for people to get up and other people to sit down. So if you have a 12-minute total program times five, you have five times 35 people per hour. Some quick calculations here.
It'd be four.
Hmm?
I think it'd be four per hour. In other words, at 12 minutes, right, and you have a two-minute queue...
35, you got 35...
At 35.
35 people, every session.
And so, yeah, so every hour, you'd do four sessions.
You could do five, actually. If we can bring it down, we could actually make it longer. But if we can bring it down to a 12-minute cycle, including load-unload, then we'd have five shows an hour. So it's five times 35 people per hour, is what I'm saying, five times the number of people. And you multiply that by an eight-hour day, you get around 1,080 people, almost 1,100, as I recall. And that, if we could do that, given the number of days the museum is open in a year, we would do quite well in covering costs.
The, once you leave that theater, that initial theater, then they're allowed into the various other venues throughout the museum.
Yes.
Now, those are not necessarily curated, right? In other words, they're almost like independent travelers throughout the museum.
Yes.
And so they'll take their time as long as they want.
That's true.
The question then becomes, how many people in the museum can the museum accommodate? What is the holding capacity of people?
It's around 350.
And...
Instant capacity.
Right, at one time. But that would also include all the employees and the curators and whatnot?
No, it's just visitors.
Just visitors?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. And I'm just curious, because one of the concerns is that because it's been sold to us, or at least communicated to us, that there are definitely tour groups who are very interested in coming in, they'll be the primary market. The concern is, when will the locals be able to come in and have their time to really experience this?
You know, this is, just for what it's worth, it's a constant contradiction in museums all over the world. That is to say, the tour operator or the promoter wants to get as many people through the facility as possible. Those who are really interested in education, really interested in promoting the subject matter, would like the visitor to have an leisurely hour to walk through the exhibitions. And that, it just works itself out, and you see how it plays. And you maybe reserve a half a day or a full day for just community folks to come in. You know, you set certain parameters. The operation of a museum is a specific knowledge, and Cliff Guzman and his folks are going, and we're going to talk about it a lot tomorrow, as in fact, is the way to orchestrate the experience so that nobody feels cheated, that the community feels it's theirs, and they want everybody to see everything they can. And yet, if everybody in the island came to the museum four times a year, it would be very, very difficult to maintain the revenue necessary to support it. So we also have to reach out to the tourist population, and we have to accommodate them as well.
Oh, there's no doubt. I'm not arguing that. I guess I just want to understand, because this is going to be a featured attraction, I think, for our island, both for tourists and locals, and I was just curious whether that was going on. And then on top of it, we are talking about some displays and where, I guess the question that becomes is since we'll be dealing with some of these tour groups coming through here, in fact, that will be part of the main generator of the revenues, right? Is the plan to be able to have, I don't know what you call those boxes, where you can have translations going on, right? Because we have Korean visitors, we have Japanese visitors, we have Chinese visitors, we have visitors from all over. How is that being addressed?
Well, originally, we had a technology that we were going to use, but it's too old right now. What's happening in museums today is that the museum will have an app for your smartphone.
Okay, that's right.
And the smartphone, you'll load it when you come in. It takes five minutes to load the app. And as you walk around the facility, GPS will let the program know where you are. And if you want to hear it in Japanese, you can do that on your phone.
I appreciate that. Madam Chair, I just was curious about this, because the presentation was on the experience itself.
It's a very good question to ask. We were originally going to do it with QR codes, but QR codes have passed into history, like so much has happened over the last six years.
Right. I thank you.
Oh, thank you. And do you know that Senator Torres has a follow-up question?
Actually, Jimmy asked my questions, Senator. But I didn't want to be ill-mannered and not say, "Sesuus maasi" for a very thorough presentation, very thoughtful consideration for the culture. I was just, I know that you've been on board this project since the very beginning, I believe with GBB. I was once there when this whole museum concept was started.
That's true.
And, no, but Sesuus maasi is very exciting, and certainly it's going to be a museum that the people will be very proud to have. So thank you very much for your efforts.
It is my pleasure and privilege, I promise you.
Thank you, Senator Torres. And I do, too, want to extend my buckling Sesuus maasi for a very detailed presentation. And I do know that those that were here, that are here for this public hearing, will have a good sense of reporting it when we deliberate it on session floor and literally talk about what was shared with us today. So, signa maasi.
Thank you. We appreciate it, and we appreciate, actually, you doing to help us out here. Time has become an enemy.
Very, yes, yes. So thank you very much. I will ask Mr. Tovis, because I do know that GIDEA does take the time to give us an updated report, and just because not all my colleagues were able to make it today, maybe you could do is, I'm hoping to hear this on the October session and report this out immediately. So I would ask, if it's possible, if you can give me the updated listing from GIDEA as it relates to the Hauppons projects. You guys have been very detailed in providing the legislature with that. And if you can provide the most updated copy, which should be this month for October, if you can give that to us so that we can append it to the journal, it would really help our colleagues out on trying to understand what's remaining.
Yes, ma'am. Absolutely, Madam Chair, and we'll get that to you by this week.
I appreciate it. Signa maasi. Senator Rodriguez, as the author, any closing? Okay. If not, again, for the record to the listening audience, we do plan to hear Bill 371 on the October session, deliberate this on the floor, the report, committee report will be done. My staff is put on notice. If there's anybody else who is not present today who would like to present written testimony in opposition or support of, please do not hesitate by sending it to us at 155 Hessler Place, Hagatny, Guam, to senator@tinamunyabarns.com, or the old-fashioned way by fax simile, and that still works with us, 472-3400. And Senator Rodriguez, just for the record, go ahead and state your email address so they can send it to you also.
Senator D. Rodriguez at gmail dot com.
With that being said, this public hearing on Municipal Affairs, Tourism, Housing, and Guam Preservation Trust, all the appointments in Bill 371 has been publicly heard. We are now adjourned at 10:41 a.m. Signa maasi.